Thank you all for being here this evening. Will you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for being here this evening and thank you for all retiring. Can I get a roll call for the Monday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-four school board meeting? Miss Stevens O'Steel?
Here.
Miss Liskini?
Here.
Miss Martin Dale? Miss Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Bosso? Here. Uh, moving on, adoption of the agenda. Director of the Board of Education approved the agenda for June tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Can I get a motion to approve that? Thank you, Mrs. Stevens O'Steel. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, roll call, please. Miss Stevens O'Steel?
Yes.
Miss Peterson?
Yes.
Miss Liskini?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso? Uh, yes. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Um, the Director of the Board of Education approved the minutes for the May thirteenth, twenty-second, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, June third, and fourth meetings, or two thousand twenty-four meetings as attached. Can you get a motion to approve those?
So, Peterson?
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second?
Second, Liskini.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskini. Roll call. Miss Peterson?
Yes.
Miss Liskini?
Yes.
Miss Stevens O'Steel?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso? Yes. Uh, moving on, we have two presentations for this evening. The first will be the recognition of retiring personnel with Matt DiCastro and Lloyd Dale.
Thanks, Mary. All right, good evening, President Bosso, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Wise, Mr. Garci, this evening, Lord and I are happy to be here to recognize our twenty-three, twenty-four retiring personnel. We want to start by saying congratulations to all the district retirees. The individuals that'll be here tonight are the ones that responded to our C P. I think what we'll do is we'll call your name, we'll read it, start from left to right, and I don't know if Mr. Garci will be answering the presentation, but we'll take a picture. Okay? All right. Lord, I'll be switching off. So first, we have Pedrika Adams. Pedrika retired on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for twenty-nine years. She began her career as a substitute and became a cook at Highland Park Elementary School, previously known as Park Street Middle School. In her fall of nineteen ninety-four, she then spent more than six years catering for special events. Next, she served the staff and students at Galloway Ridge and media school before finishing her career at Jackson Middle School as her head cook. All right, next we have Patricia Burman Weizum. Patricia retired on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for twenty-five years. She began her career as a cook at Alton Hall Elementary School. She then spent several years at Prairie Norton Elementary School, in Derby Woods Elementary School, serving breakfast and lunch with children. She concluded her career as custodian at Hayes Elementary School.
Next, we have Kimberly Dear. Kim retired on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for twenty-nine years. She began her career as a second grade teacher at Darbydale Elementary School. She then moved to Alton Hall, where she first, where she taught first, second, and fourth grades. After that, she moved to West Franklin Elementary School, teaching second grade, K-Talk, and T-Salt, where she concluded her career.
We have Nancy Brenheiser. Nancy retired on July first, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for thirty years. She began her career as a three-hour cook at both Wesson High School and Buckeye Woods Elementary. She then spent three years as an assistant food service supervisor. Following that, she returned to Wesson High School as head cook, where she dedicated over twenty-six years of service, uh, serving the Coopers before retiring. Joe Conley. Joe Conley retired in January of twenty twenty-four as a head custodian after serving the district for twenty-six years. Throughout his career, he worked at Wesson High School, at North Franklin Elementary School, and finally at Fulton Crossing Elementary School. He is now serving, thankfully, uh, at Central District.
Stephanie Hall. Stephanie retired on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for thirty-three years. Her career began in nineteen ninety-one at Monterey Elementary School, where she taught third, fourth, and fifth grades. She then taught elementary enrichment at Harmon Elementary School for one year before moving to Buckeye Woods Elementary School, where she served for four years. In two thousand and nine, Stephanie transitioned to the role of a gifted intervention specialist, and in two thousand and fifteen, she became a gifted coordinator at the District Service Center, where she concluded her career.
Tanya Hamer. Tanya Hamer retired in January of twenty twenty-four after serving the district for fifteen years. She spent more than sixteen years in the transportation department as a school bus driver, serving several schools, including Prairie Lincoln Elementary, Pole Crossing Elementary School, and Wesson High School. Karen Haggerty. Karen retired on June third, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for eighteen years. She spent her career, uh, as a secretary at Westlin, uh, West Franklin Elementary School, showing unworthy commitment to the students, staff, and families.
Daphne Hedgecock. Daphne is retiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for thirty-one years. She began her career as an impact teacher at Pleasant View Middle School. She then moved to Park Street Intermediate, where she served as a technology teacher, impact teacher. Daphne continued in this role at Jackson Middle School, where she also, also taught family consumer science. She's concluding her career at Central Crossing High School, where she has been teaching in family consumer science.
All right, Amy James. Amy retiring on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for twenty-two years. She began her career as the athletic secretary at Franklin High School. She then transitioned to the District Service Center, so as curriculum secretary. She's concluding her career as the state and federal program secretary.
Daryl Lennox. Daryl retired on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for nearly thirty-five years. He was hired in nineteen ninety as a language arts teacher at Finland Middle, where he taught seventh and eighth grade for twenty-seven years. He eventually moved to Park Street Intermediate School, where he began teaching sixth grade language arts.
All right, Tom Logan. Tom Logan is retired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for thirty years. He was hired as an electrician and worked in that role for six years before transitioning to a physician as a computer technician. Most recently, he has served as the district's telephone technician.
Amy O'Neil. Amy is retiring in July of twenty twenty-four after serving the district for thirty-one years. She started her career as a teacher at Monterey Elementary School. Amy then served as a staff development teacher at Finland Elementary, before becoming the power facilitator at the District Service Center. She was welcomed to Galloway Ridge Intermediate School as their assistant principal and is finishing her career in the same room at Park Street Intermediate.
Carrie Murs. Carrie is retiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for thirty-two years. Carrie started her career as a crossing contractor at West Franklin Elementary School and later became their medication contractor. She was subsequently hired as one of the secretaries of West Franklin. She's concluded her thirty-two and a half years of service in the same building. Tom Ricks. Tom's retiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for twenty-one years. He began his career with the district as a substitute bus driver. Was offered a full-time position as custodian in December of two thousand and three. He served in this capacity at Grove City High School, Derby Woods Elementary School, Stiles Elementary School, and eventually Carmen Elementary School. Deborah Stamper. Deborah is retiring on July first, twenty twenty-four, after serving the district for twenty-eight years. She started her career as a cook at East Franklin Elementary School and later served in the same capacity at Park Street Intermediate School. Eventually, she transitioned to become assessment aid at Pleasant View Middle School. She will conclude her career at Franklin Woods Intermediate School. All right, we'd like to thank, thank you for your dedication and your five hundred and eight combined years of late service for our students, schools, and community. Congratulations.
Thank you again to all the retirees. A lot of service we just lost. Next presentation we have is with Dr. Jamie Letcher, Deputy Superintendent, with District Safety.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Bosso, members of the Board, Dr. Wise, and Mr. Garci. The Southwestern City School District is committed to providing safe and supportive learning environments for all twenty-one thousand of our students and nearly thirty-six hundred staff members. As a district, we are actively engaged in all aspects of safety planning as a matter of our daily responsibilities, as well as our strategic planning process. The foundational elements of a systematic approach to school safety include the following. Staff, individuals designated to coordinate and support safety protocols across the district and community. School climate, creating conditions conducive to student learning and support. Reporting systems for safety procedures, protocols, and data collection. Threat assessment, to proactively continuously monitor potential threats as a team. Emergency operations plans, E O Ps that are refined and completed every three years and serve as an anchor document for the state. Um, this includes all thirty-two of our buildings, including the V S C. Site assessment, this is the ability to access buildings and grounds and examine their safety, security, accessibility, and emergency preparedness. It also includes training of staff, faculty, and students. Ongoing support of application and practice skills and drills and protocols. This can include fire drills, inclement weather, as well as active shooter approach. These drills then follow into tabletop exercises that we're going to talk about later. And then finally, recovery plans, which include debriefing of drills, traumatic event crisis intervention planning or T-Sup teaming, and then also reflection and refinement. So in order to create a systematic and cohesive comprehensive school safety model, it has been vital that we collaborate with experts in the field, from city administration and planning teams, Grove City Police Department, as well as contracting with safety, um, security experts. Tonight, we're fortunate to have Mr. Phil Bedra, Kevin Teeford, representing the city of Grove City, Lieutenant Jason Stern, representing the Grove City P D, Mr. Gary Seeger, president of Safeguard Risk Solutions, Mr. Monty Bederman, our business, uh, services director, and Mr. Evan DeVoe, the executive director of communications for the district. So, as we look at the different sects that support, uh, our collaboration for a systematic approach to safety, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Phil Bedra and Kevin Teeford, who will begin our presentation with their commitment to collaboration across the district, as well as our community.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Wise, Mr. Garci, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'd like to start us off with three quick points. Culture, why it's important, uh, the whole community, which is now a national focus, and bottom line. All right, it all starts with culture. And the threats that schools and communities face in the twenty-first century are evolving, complex, and sometimes overwhelming. The threats are so unique that the skills that we use day in, day out, day in and day out, are not enough. They require specialized training, planning, and exercise. The paradigm has changed, and I think that goes back to, uh, nineteen ninety-nine in Colorado. But through the hard work of many that are in this room, we've created a culture of preparedness, community preparedness, where we own it, regardless if it's in the city or the district. Engaging the whole community in a national focus. The district and the city are so intertwined, it's, would be hard to imagine an incident that would occur and not affect the other. In fact, we know that it would, and we've come to that conclusion based on partnerships and the training and preparedness that we've conducted over the last ten to fifteen years. In fact, the term "whole community" is now a term used in FEMA and National Planning Guidance and Plan. The days of planning in a vacuum or in a silo are over. We believe that the district and the city are better together and, and work, uh, work and perform better together. And last, the bottom line, mismanaged incidents define districts and communities forever, whether it's organizational, institutional, or an individual failure. You don't have to look much farther than the Volvets Texas, uh, Parkland, Florida, to see how communities' negative legacies are cast in stone. The public expects us to be competent and prepared to handle any event. There are no chances, no second chances, and that, that needs to be said again. There are no opportunities to, to do it well. And, um, I believe that's the bottom line, is that we get one chance to do it right. And that's what we've been working for for many years. I'd like to introduce Kevin Teeford. He's our safety director. Kevin, uh, is a retired lieutenant colonel of the State Patrol, and he brings, uh, a good and unique perspective from the state level to us here in Grove City and the community.
Thank you, uh, President Bosso, members of the Board, Dr. Wise, and Mr. Garci. Come to your behalf of the safety services for the city of Grove City, as Mr. Bedra had stated, an opportunity to, to expand and, uh, across the state of Ohio and in the country, and witness interaction between federal, state, and local safety services. And I can tell you that, in my experience, our processes and training and exercise conducted is second to none. And so you should be, uh, proud of your staff and supportive of your staff and the work they've done to prepare for a multitude of incidents in the systems that are set in place, uh, by the school, school administration and the, and the city is absolutely paramount to the safety. There is absolutely nothing that we will do, uh, in our job, uh, that's, that's of no more greater importance than protecting our, our students and, uh, your staff. And so, a shout out to my boss, Mr. Bedra, who's really been the spearhead behind all the training and exercises. Uh, this doesn't happen in every place in Ohio or the country. And so you should be, uh, proud of your staff and the work that they're doing. Good evening.
Okay. Well, I'm Lieutenant Jason Stern. Thank you all for having me here to speak very briefly on a couple of things. But, and I did promise my bosses I would not add too much. But just from my own information, would you raise your hand if you are here as a retiree or supporting a retired, family retiree? Just raise your hand. That is awesome. So last Thursday, I had the honor to be an N C for a retirement ceremony. We have Kelly Davidson retired after thirty-three years of service. And as I look through the list, the years, five hundred plus years, that is tremendous. And, uh, Bedra mentioned earlier about culture. I'm gonna add a couple of words, collaboration, community, and family. We have five hundred plus years of service in this room right here. And that's what Southwestern City Schools is, that's what Grove City is, that's what the south, southwestern corner of Central Ohio is. Community and collaboration. So, for that, the Grove City piece, the Grove City Police Department piece of that, we have our school resource officers we plug in, we have liaison officers with the schools that we can talk about. But the big picture philosophy is that connection point, that collaboration between the school district, the city, and the department, the police department. So we can get to the heart of those threat issues when they happen and focus our energy in that preparedness and the prevention components. Again, I'm not going to read all of the slides. We have a lot of programs we work on, we have trainings that we'll do, that they mentioned. We've done some different, uh, field exercises. And in the moment, the threats themselves, or the disturbances, or even something just minor, or the question about traffic flow or parking, we have the names and the contacts, and we can get together and solve the problems right away. This slide highlights some of the school resource officers. Uh, I represent the Grove City Division of Police. We also have Franklin County sheriffs and the Columbus Police, that are involved in Southwestern as a whole. And I can tell you, I've met with our law enforcement partners, and everybody is committed to the, the heart of the mission, and that is that safety component, the safety and security, and collaboration with our community partners and the students, staff, and the district. With that, I think in a period of two months.
Good evening. I'm gonna be going into some of our district plans and pieces that we do in the district. So if we talk about the emergency operation plans, we'll hear of those called E O Ps. Jurisdictions that we work with across this district, uh, some of the different trainings that we have, drills and exercise, and some of our after actions and reviews. So, as Dr. Lusher said earlier, um, I'm sorry, before I get to that. Uh, also with me tonight is, uh, Mr. Gary Seeger from Safeguard Risk Solutions. Uh, we use his services in this district as a, uh, kind of a, a resource for us in many different fractions. His background comes as a fire educator. He is an active law enforcement officer. He's contracted across the country with many school districts and working with safety. And he's highly recognized in the Ohio School Safety Center for his work with school districts in central Ohio. So he is integral into a lot of the things we're doing as a consultant in those areas. As well, he brings to us some different applications. We have a M E R P, Local Emergency Response Plan, that our staff have access to, which breaks down some of our emergency operation plans for staff and gives them action steps, uh, in a situation. As well as he assists with a lot of our exercises, after-action reviews, and also does some trainings for our staffs out of buildings. Moving into our emergency operation plans, uh, in the state of Ohio, a requirement is to terminate in every three years, there is a template that the state gives us to work with. We turn those into the Ohio School Safety Center as part of the Ohio Department of Education workforce now. That is the area that does our safety plans. We actually just renewed our safety plans across all thirty-four sites in the district here in the last month. Again, that's another area that, uh, Mr. Seeger is helping, helps us with. Um, so these are very high-level plans. We're talking about how different multiple hazards impact a school in one way. We could be talking about a chemical spill on a roadway outside of a school or in the school. We'd be talking about a weather incident, or we could be talking about human threats. So these plans are very broad in their coverage of the different safety areas. The extent of the plans, they're, they're roughly eighty inches long in, in those plans, so there's a lot of content. These plans are protected under the law as a private document, as, because they're talking about the safety of school. We don't release those out to people, uh, because of that. These are a three-year cycle, as I said, we just renewed ours for the next three years. During that time, annually, we have some different things that we have to do. But the components of these plans are gonna have, uh, we have some floor plans, we have some site plans, we have area views. Uh, we talk about our threat, threat assessment teams, we have to list those in our plans. We talk with, um, our emergency operation piece, we talk with the stakeholders, and they have signatures that they actually sign off on, so our law enforcement and, and different jurisdictions there. During the cycle of that plan, we have different activities we have to do on a yearly basis. Um, each year, the plans get recertified by the building administrator, where they'll basically go through a review and see if there's changes to, uh, different contacts that are listed in their plans for different areas. As well as we do a yearly emergency management test, we call that the E M T. So yearly, we do a test of our plan. And the intent of that is to see if our plan functions correctly. So you're testing that plan in different activities. So we will do that as a district-level, kind of high level. So these are the cycles for that. There's three different types of plans. There's the, uh, tabletop exercise, where we'll get together, you have a scenario, and you have a conversation, you walk through that scenario. We'll have a, a functional exercise, that could be something done in a building. Uh, that could include a fire drill, or tornado drill, or any of those kind of drills, or staple drill, or, uh, you know, a lockdown drill. There, any one of those different types of drills that are discussed in your plans can be part of that functional. And then, uh, what the state calls a full-scale exercise is a little bit more complex, where you're actually doing multiple functional areas, as well as looking at how you're reacting to those. So those are the, uh, annual E M Ts that we do. Along with our operation plan, we also work through the fire code. So annually, our buildings are required to do fire drills, tornado drills, safety drills. All three of those are laid out, the slide tonight it has there, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but it tells them how many we have to do on a, on a monthly basis. Um, you know, tornado drills, we run in the months of April, May, June, um, for the tornado drills. So all those are kinds of things that are being done in the building. As well as, annually, our staff will put together a tabletop exercise that the principals run with them. Again, we work with Mr. Seeger to, to Safeguard Risk Solutions, help us build that exercise that the principals can deliver in their ability with their staff. All these drills get reported back to the, um, Ohio Safety Center. Fire drills actually get reported back to the state Fire Marshal, if we have to operate those. We do work with a lot of different agencies. Um, so if you're looking through in our police divisions, we have, you know, Grove City, which is here with us tonight, we have Franklin County sheriffs, we have Franklin Township Police, and we have the Franklin County, or, excuse me, Columbus Police Department. So those are all jurisdictions across our buildings. Every building, it, and where they're at, is gonna depend on which jurisdiction we're working with in that building. From the fire and rescue side, we have the five different townships, Jack, Jackson Township, Franklin Township, Curry Township, Columbus Fire Department, and Pleasant Township. So, the other thing we also do with Mr. Seeger, so he helps us coordinate, we actually bring a meeting together with all the jurisdictions, and we invite them all together so that we can meet as a team and have conversations about things that are going on, what are they seeing as they're out in our buildings, are there questions, which are things we need to review, other things that we need from them that we can partner together. We try to keep a cohesive group that way, since we're working with so varied, different departments and townships, there's a lot of different variations out there, so it's a really good piece that we can bring everybody together and work together and collaborate in that model. The last piece I have here is the tiers of safety that we use in our district. So we have three levels that we use. And, uh, the general idea is we don't use code words for our safety. That becomes confusing. So we use plain language, and that is the recommendation for homeland security. Is, so we have our staple, our secure perimeter, and our lockdowns. And obviously, you're going from one level to the next. So staple is a little bit more defined area, kind of standing area. It could be their mercy method going on in the hallway. So I need kids to stay in their area and not travel hallway right now. Um, I could have an activity going on in the neighborhood that we just don't want kids moving around or moving to recess, so we can be in the staple. Secure perimeter, really something's going on out in the neighborhood. We're in secure perimeter pretty much all the time, um, with our doors and security and locks on. But that's, if something's else going on, we got, we could have inclement weather going on as well. We're gonna secure that perimeter and not let traffic in and out so much. A little different than on a daily where we're secured, but we're letting people in and out as they buzz in the office. When we go to secure perimeter, there's no more entry or exit at all the time. And then a lockdown is your street is your top level. A lockdown is where there's an actual threat in the building. And that's when you're gonna have people that are securing themselves in their building or they're making decisions. We talk about the decision matrix that teachers make in their situation. We talk about the decision matrix that teachers make in their situation. Is it safer for you to get out? Is it safer for you to secure a place? Is it better for you to move your students? There's a matrix there for them to look at. I'm gonna let Mr. DeBau talk about this a little bit more in his piece, but those are kind of the different levels of tiers.
Good evening. From a communication standpoint, when it comes to just keeping all stakeholders informed, obviously crisis communication is imperative to what we do. It's arguably at the top of my list from an apartment standpoint in terms of, again, making sure all folks know what they need to know and they need to know it to keep students and staff safe. You know, again, coming back to Lieutenant Stern here is just referencing as well the individuals in the room who've contributed so much. I think about everybody who's driven a bus, served in cafeteria, served in front office. Karen and I have been on the phone quite a lot, and we go with it, you know, if we have a secure perimeter over the years, is one of our main secretaries at Westland Elementary that it really is a team, it really is a team effort when it comes to, again, just making sure that we're in coordination with law enforcement, that we're letting our partners know what they need to know to keep students and staff safe and to move through our plans with efficacy. So if we can transition here, so when an incident occurs, again, from our standpoint, we might get it from multiple different areas, right? So we might have a principal upon to let us know that, hey, they touched base with a local officer on boots on the ground. You know, we may be getting, it's not uncommon to get a call from a bus, a radio in from a bus that, hey, I might have observed, you know, something out in the community as well too. So it's a lot of gathering of fact sets and then delineating what is factual, what is actually going on, what have you. We rely heavily on our boots in the ground. Again, the staff behind me is vital to our infrastructure and our ability to be able to live out our plans with efficacy again. From there, our goal is always to keep families informed when we go into one of those different levels. I'll use the most recent level, I think there was a Darbydale or a couple Darbydale connections in the room here. Recently, Darbydale out that way, the prison memorial was going through a safety simulation where they were actually chasing people across the road. And obviously, you know, when those things are happening, as they're going through live safety drills, we wanna make sure our families are aware of it. So again, especially when we're talking about our levels and K four, you know, if it's something they may encounter on the bus, what have you, that we wanna make sure families are prepared and equipped to have that discussion at home if they need to. So again, that's a lower-tier example. As Monty mentioned earlier, again, we are very implicit with our different levels that we use. We do a lot of redirecting to news media when they get, you know, a tip or something turned in of, hey, we heard the school's on lockdown. You know, and it might actually be a hallway emergency, for instance. So it's not uncommon, obviously, with twenty-one thousand students, we have a lot of really specific medical plans. So it's not uncommon at all for, you know, again, unfortunately, to, you know, have a seizure scenario. And again, we gotta time it, we gotta make sure the student has their level of comfort and care around that incident. We can keep kids out of the hallway, so that would be an incident of a staple. But there's often, again, a need to do that redirect with not just the media, but again, just, you know, folks out in the community as well too. So from our standpoint, it's about being proactive as well in terms of just reacting to situations as they come about. So our goal is to always, you know, again, try to empower our stakeholders, our families, our parents, our community members, our staff to know and be familiar with those three levels. Again, that's not something you find in every district, and I really appreciate the time that Monty and Mark, our law enforcement city partners, have really put in to making sure that we've got clear language, that we can make sure that folks, you know, again, know what they need to know and they need to know. And so from an empowerment standpoint of just knowing the procedures, we've done a lot this year on redoing our district safety page. For those in the community who haven't had a chance to check that out yet, I really encourage you to. Again, it goes into a lot of different elements that we encounter on a daily basis, from a communication side, from messaging side, from safety tier side, and then expands upon our law enforcement partnerships as well. So I don't know if this video is gonna play, can you try to take a step? So one of our recurring pieces is with social media messaging, making sure that kids, if they encounter things, know how to report a concern. So you'll see in this video here that we put together last summer, students talking to fake students, but I mean, again, a real applicable scenario, talking about a real-life situation they may see on social media with something that may be questionable, right? They're not sure what to do with it. The one student in the video recalls a conversation they had seen in a safety presentation with their high school principal, and they relayed the safer school hotline as an appropriate place. As you can see, the number there at the end to report such an element of such a concern. So whether it's students, whether it's families, you know, again, it's about as being proactive as it is reactive in making sure that we are constantly getting in front of our different stakeholder groups with that same messaging so that they have the tools to not only see something, say something, but also to help spread the word on the different avenues to be effective eyes and ears and agents on behalf of safety in the district. So again, this is the eight-four-four Safer Ohio tip line. We also have on, this is straight from our district page on this slide and the next slide, again, we also have the non-emergency numbers. It's not uncommon for us to get a call from, you know, a parent that has a certain level of concern with something, maybe their student has encountered, or maybe after hours, they're walking, you know, around the neighborhood around one of our schools, and they're not quite sure who's gonna answer the phones after hours. Is this a nine-one-one piece? So we wanna have also the non-emergency numbers that are clearly available as well to make sure, again, everybody has the tools that they need to just tele-trust an adult and continue to build off those pieces. Lieutenant Stern mentioned a little bit earlier, S R O program and our liaisons. It is vital that we continue to build capacity with our students at a very young age with some of those liaison programs that they, you know, wanna run towards law enforcement to help report things, you know, again, if they see something, you know, a little bit out of the ordinary too. So that tiers up, obviously, when it goes into our explorers program as well as our, the S R O program as well too at all four high schools, so. And again, just wanted to end here on our district safety resource page. Again, this is a lot to cover, you know, here in fifteen, twenty minutes or so, but again, we just wanna make sure that our stakeholders are informed of our practices and procedures and that, again, they can be agents right there along with us in conveying, you know, our different tiers of safety and, again, how to keep students and staff safe throughout the process, so. Captain Stern? Floor is open for questions.
I was gonna ask something. I appreciate all the safety. Thank you, everyone, not only help with the presentation today, but helps to ensure the well-being and safety of everyone in our school. Nine hundred ninety-four miles is a lot to, a lot to keep track of with all the twenty-one thousand students. And, you know, in our society, we haven't chosen half the society, but we should correct or, you know, make sure we're ready for whatever is, you know, thrown at us, right? So I know safety is a big thing for me, as all of you know. I have a really basic question, if that's okay. It kind of popped up with the idea of all of these years retiring and everything and seeing that the requirements are, you know, a three-year kind of cycle. My basic question is, how do you kind of keep track of the staff that actually does the drills, the substitutes and everything? Like, do you guys have like a process for, you know, new hires are coming in, but you did the safety drill last year, and you're doing it again? So I'm gonna try to ask this question. You know, I'm always like, you think, you might think it's my question, but it's like, how do you keep track of all the staff that is doing the safety drills?
That's a really good question. The emergency operating plans, we submit those to the state every three years, but we give you the training and the drills here. And so we keep track of all of that. And so some of the modules are actually online, so you get that content early, and then like the tabletops and the drills we do throughout the year are very informative. And so through the onboarding process, which kind of was a two-pronged approach to that, so the concept they need to have in advance, and then we pull them through the drills and the trainings. And that's what it's also great about the partnership with Gary, is we have a building where we have, you know, what we'd say is a higher percentage of new folks. We'll do targeted P D, so you'll see him working not only in small groups and through the staff, or they'll bring up, you know, a concern, and they want some additional training because, you know, again, they want the automaticity of the if-then model when something does happen. So I would say it's a little bit of code, but absolutely, we keep track of that, and that happens yearly. So it's not only the daily piece, but then strategically too, and that's one of the three-year requirements that we're supposed to do.
It worries me losing all the experience and everything, like, oh, how am I gonna keep track? And then another question that people, you know, ask me since the police department is here, middle school S R Os, are those in the works? Are those what we talked about, or is that just something that actually we like to ask? Is that something that, like, is a real thing, or?
I will say that we have been having those discussions, you know, this last summer, there was actually a line item in terms of safety and security and the possibility of including S R O programs. We've had those discussions, a lot of it really comes down to capacity. So just like we are dealing with staffing challenges, so too are some of the agencies that we've worked with, so some of that will play into kind of a timeline there.
Thank you, good looking Gary.
So thank you very much, and I just wanna tell you, we couldn't do it alone, so the district is humbly and earnestly grateful for the partnership and the expertise and we thought partners, and we made sure that every child, top number, is safe and healthy. So thank you for taking the time out here to schedule to be here and share this story.
The partnerships are absolutely incredible, and you hit on some key concepts, and I want folks to understand that. Mr. DeGra said, and he said it very briefly, so love you, reinforce us. The best thing you can do is prevention, and it's that culture of prevention that makes the difference. And so while you can't prevent everything, and we talk a lot about the plans in here and making sure they're technically correct, we've had Homeland Security, FBI, every resource under the world look at the technical pieces. What we do know from who we learned from others is you have to be simple and expect people to implement them. That's one. And two is, it's usually human error at some point, or it's human convenience, and we all know that. If somebody hides a key outside their house under a rock, and it's the way that somebody gets in, because it's the obvious fake rock that sits on the front porch. And it's those types of things that leave doors open. But our plans are solid, we have all the agencies involved, we continue to involve people and engage them in such a way that we can make that difference. So we're grateful for the partnership, really the three individuals here from Grove City, they the partnership across the agencies and bringing together people to the table along with Gary that we couldn't reach otherwise. And so we want to say very publicly, say very publicly, thank you to all of you for what you do in order to give our children safe. The other thing before I turn this over is retirees, we appreciate you, but if you really wanna leave after we kind of close this up, we'll give you a hand as well. We also do the rest of the unit, so make love.
Thank you, everybody. We're gonna move on now. We got board reports, any board reports, board members?
I wanted to touch base on our board meeting we had on Saturday, as we think of only, and say thank you to the new superintendent that was starting August first, Mr. Randy Banks, I guess he knows us as a C B. But I wanted to remind everybody that on Saturday, we did vote to approve Mr. Banks for the world superintendent coming up. I'm looking forward to opportunity to work with Mr. Banks here in future, the next few months and years. And I know a staff come to know someone with a friendly call, Richard DeGra, who is too focused and dedicated to creating a unified sense of belonging across our district. That would be really amazing. He actually has wonderful ideas and initiatives that I'm excited to see come to life as he returns to the district. Also another partner, person here in the district, that's really cool. I know my passion is giving every student the best chance of success, and Mr. Banks, I'm proud to say, is an exceptional leader, and feels the same way. So in case you missed that, that happened on Saturday, and a lot of people here just went and missed that. So that's another thing that the board's been up to this past weekend, so, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, moving on to public participation rate and agenda items, I don't think we have any. So we're gonna move on to student-staff achievement liaison report, which we do to D Kelly, but she passed the time of me. And it's a long one. So we're gonna go on. Congratulations to Westland Air Force J R O T C unit who earned the distinguished unit award for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. To earn this award, units are required to accomplish at least an average of twelve hours of community service per cadet. Westland averaged over twenty-six point five hours per cadet, earned at least a, and then they have to earn at least a heat standards on the last unit inspection. Westland earned an exceed standard on their last inspection. They also have to have at least a hundred cadets enrollment in the program. Westland has a hundred and ten cadets enrolled this year and meet all A F J R O T C headquarters deadlines. This is the sixth year in a row that Westland has earned this award, which puts them in the top twenty percent of all eight hundred and seventy Air Force J R O T C units across the country. Great job, crew cadets. Congratulations to Phyllian Middle School Band and Orchestra, which participated at the O M E A Large Group Contest last month. The seventh grader band received a two excellent rating, and the eighth grade band received a one superior rating. The seventh and eighth grade combined orchestra received a one superior rating as well. Congratulations to directors Samuel Hershey and Megan Hunger and the Phyllian Middle School students. Good job. Congratulations to all the students who graduated early in the class of two thousand twenty-four. We are proud of the compliments and the look, and we look forward to seeing how successful they will achieve in the years to come. Moving on to congratulations to the Fullerton Middle School Track Wildcats, who have qualified to compete with the best track athletes in the state of Ohio middle school track and field competition last month. Gregory Thomas is ranked seventh in state in the hundred meter dash with a time of eleven point five one and a four-by-two relay of Joel Picardo, Amir Abdul, Hawk Reed, Chapman, and we got Armande, Armanden, sorry I'm butchering these things, who also, and they're ranked twenty-second. These athletes not only broke the Norton record in these events, but also broke the best of southwestern district records for the hundred and two hundred meter dash and the four-by-two hundred meter relay in our district championships. Congratulations to Monterey Elementary School first grade Samantha DeCastro, who was named the National P T A Reflections Award winner for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. She was one of only seven students in state of Ohio to take home the prestigious national honors. And of those seven, she was the only one to receive their highest rank mark of excellence. Her award-winning submission came through the dance choreography category in the form of performative traditional Irish dance. Matt, good job. Wednesday, May fifteenth, the N J R O T C cadets from the Central Crossing High School organized and participated in the Columbus, Ohio portion of the Carry the Load. The Carry the Load Memorial May campaign takes place throughout the month to raise awareness and provide active ways to connect with Americans in the sacrifices made by our military veterans, first responders, and their families across the United States. There are over fifteen hundred participants in this event. The cadets set up the event and checked participants in, including registration and T-shirt distribution. They presented a nine-person color guard, led the walk, and cleaned up the Veterans Memorial upon completion. Prior to the event, the cadets were given a private tour of the Ohio Veterans Memorial Museum. If you guys haven't been there, it's really neat to see. Moving on, congratulations to Percy High School Theater Department for being named outstanding student orchestra for the second year in a row for their production of Shrek the Musical. This award was announced at the Columbus Association for the Performing Arts for the two thousand twenty-four Marquee Awards during its annual student showcase held on June sixth at the Ohio Theater. Designated to recognize this and celebrate the wealth of high-caliber musical theater talent in Central Ohio, this year-long educational program offers selected high schools an opportunity to participate. opportunities to participate in professional theater educational activities throughout the school year. Next will be congratulations to Groce City High School Esther Finkham, who is the 2024 state of Ohio champion in the 400 meter seeded division. She also took home second place in the 100 meter and the 800 meter earlier this month. Congratulations to all the following Southwestern Career Academy Interactive Media Design students who recently competed at the Business Professionals of America National Leadership Conference in Chicago, Illinois from May 10th through the 14th. Natalie Mavica, Graphic Design through Promotion, she was sixth place nationally. Maria Rodriguez Rivera, Tristan Sim, Melissa, I'm sorry, Emily Martinez Herrera, and East Sports Team finished 10th in the nation. Tristan Sim competed in digital marketing concepts and was eighth out of 352. Tristan Sim also competed in ethics and professionalism, and he was sixth out of 13 in the first round. More than 6,000 members from all over the nation gathered at the conference to compete in the business and IT skills competition, attended workshops focused on leadership development, and voted for the National Student Leadership Team for the BBA for 2024-2025 year. Moving on, the Southwest City School District Staff Achievement, congratulations to Stiles Elementary Principal Dan Peters, who has been named the Principal of the Year by the YMCA of Central Ohio annually. The YMCA nominates and recognizes principals from partner schools with before and after school programs for their leadership, collaboration, and planning efforts. It was ultimately Mr. Peterson who took home top honors of the 2024, or 2023-2024 school year. Congratulations, Mr. Peterson. And last but not least, Southwestern gives back six grade students, and this is, or Miss Hunt's class at Hayes Intermediate School volunteered at the Hysler Developmental Center as a part of the Community Action Unit last month. Students played games, did crafts, danced, read books. The residents, the students have also visited the Mid-Ohio Food Bank, Sayota Grove Metro Park, and participated in the Grove City Buddy Ball. Way to go for your community, Huskers. Thank you so much for that. Last month, Finland Middle School and Franklin Woods Intermediate School collaborated on a beautification event, cleaning up the community, uh, look, my mouth is getting dry. Pedestrian trails to promote safe walking and biking to schools. The schools pursued and were awarded a Healthy Eating and Active Living Grant from Franklin County Health, and have been working throughout the school year to encourage healthy choices and active lifestyles in our school community. Great work biking the bulldogs. Thank you so much to all the participants and award winners. Moving on, items for action under fiscal and operational management with Mrs. Listini.
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. This evening, under fiscal and operational management, we have 11 action items. So, everybody settle in. First, revised permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2024. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised permanent appropriations for May 2024, CX1. Number two is investments and financial statements for May 2024. It is recommended that the Board of Education, in accordance with Section 135.14 of the Ohio Revised Code, approve May investments, CX2, and cash position report, CX3. Number three is payment of bills. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of May 2024, CX4. Number four is donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the donations of $376,274.80 as detailed in X5 and authorize letters of appreciation to be sent to the donors. Number five is authorization to pay bills in accordance with Section 5705.41 of the Ohio Revised Code. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the Treasury to pay bills for May, which were not processed in accordance with Section 5705.41 of the Ohio Revised Code, CX6. Number six is purchase and sale agreement of real estate. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 1.46 acres of real property, which is located on Franklin County Auditor Parcel Number 040-010582-00 for $322,500, CX7. Number seven is to establish change funds. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the distribution of change funds versus for fiscal year 2024-25 as presented, CX8. Number eight, agreement with Franklin County Common Pleas Court. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with the Franklin County Common Pleas Court to provide truancy services for the 2024-25 school year, CX9. Number nine is transfers. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the transfers for fiscal year 2023-24 as presented, CX10. Number 10 is approval of fiscal year 2024-25 budget for the Southwest Public Libraries. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the 2024-25 budget for the Southwest Public Libraries as presented, CX11. And number 11 is the agreement with the YMCA of Central Ohio. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with the YMCA of Central Ohio to provide Head Start programming for the 2024-25 school year as presented in X12. After reviewing these items, I move them for adoption.
Can I get a second?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a roll call? Mrs. Listini.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. Moving on now, items for action for policy with Mrs. Steele.
Yes, it's items for action is policy second, final reading of the revised policies for policies 5136, personal communication devices, and policy 5500 for student conduct, and policy 5600 for student discipline. And it is recommended that the Board approve that these for passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Steele. Can I get a second?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a roll call? Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Listini.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, yes. Moving on, items for action on the curriculum, back to Mrs. Listini.
Thank you. Items for action under curriculum this evening, we have two action items. The first is the second and final reading of Course of Study Instruction Materials. It is requested that the Board of Education approve the second and final reading of the World Languages Course of Study Instructional Materials for grades nine through 12 as attached. And number two is the second and final reading of Course of Study Instruction Materials. It is requested that the Board of Education approve the second and final reading of the Literacy Course of Study Instructional Materials, grades K through six as attached. And also, these materials have been available for anyone in the community to come and review since the last board meeting, so I hope that everyone has had ample opportunity to take a look at that if they chose to do so. And after reviewing these items, I move them for passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Listini. Can I get a second?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call. Mrs. Listini.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, yes. Now, moving back to Mrs. Angela Steele for school student community.
Yes, there are six items here. The first one, Central Crossing Football, students and athletes, probably often need to travel to Ohio Western University, and it's planned for July 21st through 23rd. About 265 students will be going there. Central Crossing High School Boys Basketball would like to travel to Sandusky, Ohio in June, June 28th through the 30th. And, um, let's see, we have Central Crossing High School Volleyball Team would like to travel to Mason, Ohio, and the trip is planned for July 15th through the 17th, approximately 20 students for that one. And Grove City High School Boys Basketball Team would like to drive to, or, what do you drive? They are driving, but they would like to go to Marshall University in Huntington, West Virginia, June 23rd and 22nd, the Gulf Chapel Room. And Westland High School Basketball Team, Boys Basketball Team would also like to go to Pisony, Florida, and that's in December. They're heading here, December 26th through the 30th. And finally, and they are, two cadets from Central Crossing, Franklin Heights, and Grove City High School would like to travel to Amptemberg in Edinburgh, Indiana, and this is for June 21st and 28th. And all of these trip expenses are paid for by students, parents, if you're fundraising, and for boosters. And with all of these, I move these for passage.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Listini.
Thank you, Mrs. Listini. Roll call. Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Listini.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. Moving on, items for action on personnel with Mrs. Peterson.
Okay. On the board agenda for Monday are seven personnel items involving 299 persons. You should be glad I'm not going to read every question, because we will be here all night reading all of the names. So, I'm going to give you the breakdown. Twenty-one certificated in administrative resignations for administrative employment, nine certificated changes in appointment, 173 certificated appointments, eight classified resignations, seven classified changes in appointment, and 77 classified appointments. After reviewing all of those names, I move them for passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Steele. Can I get a roll call, please? Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Listini.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
And I'm going to put it back to.
Yes. Before we continue with the agenda, Dr. Jamie Lusher is coming forward for the opportunity to introduce two administrative staff who are present with us tonight.
Okay, we would like to welcome back Mr. Matt Jordan as our new Assistant Superintendent of Personnel. And Matt returns home to our district from Public Arlington City Schools, where he served as a assistant principal at Arlington High School, and most recently as their Chief Talent Officer. Matt was formerly an assistant principal at Franklin Heights High School and a social studies teacher at Grove City High School. Matt is a graduate of Bowling Green University, and he received his Master's in Educational Leadership and a Superintendent's License from the Ohio State University.
Thank you so much, President Bosso, Dr. Wise, Dr. Sutcliffe, rest of the board. It's great to be back. Thank you, thank you, thank for the warm welcome. I know Officer Stern was talking about it, it does, it feels like family, it's just great to be back. I'd like to thank my wife, this is, I think, the first board meeting she's ever been to in her life. But we still have 23 years of marriage next Monday, so we're pretty excited, and I'm thankful that she's here to always have my back. Just a couple of things tonight, I mean, Southwestern City Schools has been great to me, it's been great to my family, and I'm very, very happy to come back and bring what I've learned, come back and help us move along. I think you've heard them talk about being proactive instead of reactive when it comes to safety. It's definitely the call when it comes to human resources as well. Five thirty-eight years, people leaving, this is for all the things that the spirits went through, and we are all in HR together on this. We all have to recruit, we all have to retain. Everybody has to be a recruiter, you can't just be the department that does it, so we have to be on this together. So, really looking forward to doing this, looking forward to working with Matt and Lori and our team to get that going, and I have a whole bunch to learn in a very short period of time, so we can be aggressive and get after it. So, thank you so much for having me.
And then we would also like to welcome Ms. Nikki Powers. She joins us as a new principal of West Franklin Elementary School. Nikki has been an elementary assistant principal at Marion City Schools for the past few years. She regained her career as a lead teacher and district literacy specialist in the Kettering City Schools in 2003. She's a graduate of the Ohio State University, and her Master's in Educational Leadership, as well as her Principal's License from the University of Dayton. Welcome. And I have to say, it was one of the best interviews of my entire journey.
Anna, thanks.
Well, thank you, Dr. Lusher. I appreciate that so much. I'm so excited to be a part of the district, and I did notice that two of my secretaries are retiring, so I will keep calling them to get all of their information. But thank you again, and I'm just thrilled to be here, so thank you all very much.
Thank you so much for those new arrivals. All right, moving on now to public participation for non-agenda items, the first would be Kyra Hall.
Good evening. I wanted to touch base on a couple of items. Lifewave Academy, a non-profit organization, has contacted our district and made a directory request for students at Monterey and Richard Avenue Elementary, which is legal in the state of Ohio. Our district policy, however, regarding our directory information, has not been revised since 2012. A lot's changed, we can find out about just about anybody with a quick Google search. It raised an eyebrow for me when I got a postcard in the mail directed directly toward my child. People and businesses go door to door, send postcards regularly, "Hey, try my church, you owe your utility bill." None of which have my child's name, phone number, address, or picture of them. So, I handed you our current district policy. I would like to state for the record, though, however, that I would have these same concerns, no matter whether this was a religious affiliation or not, that it was granted the same access to my child and other children in my school's information. The form that I am given every year to sign up is an opt-out form. If you choose this option, you're excluding your child not only from the directory, from the yearbook, from music and athletic programs, from social media posts recognizing their academic achievement, programs your students in the school participated in, the list goes on. I'd like to propose that a new form be created, and if it's not returned, then it is to be expected that you are consenting to these things. But it would offer three boxes, one saying directory is not okay, social media is not okay, or just stick with school type things. Also, the form for our district has a lot of information. Fifty-four percent of Americans cannot read past the fifth grade level. I think our opt-out form and all other forms that we ask our parents and caregivers to fill out should be in coordination with that. Aside from that, my biggest concern is that there is currently no policy on how our district is vetting the people and organizations that are requesting these directories, and quite possibly the children's information and picture is getting into the wrong hands pretty quickly. My second concern is with the Board of Education's transparency, along with parent and community inclusion. It has been stated several times inside and outside of board meetings, as well as during the campaign period for four of the five board members, the transparency is key. You want parent, caregiver, and community participation. As I have been attending more and more board meetings over the last several years, one thing has been quite obvious and trending down, transparency and open communication. Since January, I have been in attendance of all regular board meetings, as well as most of the special meetings. Most of you have seen my face. And one thing is true, that, you know, things are not openly discussed. The last time that policies and topics were discussed was at the Roundtable Meeting, where the superintendent search firms were being interviewed. All of the items listed above have been yesed or long through every meeting. It seems kind of like the sunshine laws being violated. I would also argue that most of our attendants of our meetings are unaware of most of the topics and details in your attached documents and PDFs on the agenda. The district website, including the Board of Education section, is incredibly difficult to navigate, and I often worry if people can find and read the attached documents. I have a suggestion. Make a social media post of Make a social media post of the upcoming board meeting with a link to the agenda on the district website. Share how someone can speak on an agenda or a non-agenda item. Continue to post the agenda and all of the things that are already with accordance of board policy. Print the agenda and all of the attachments, insert X one, X two, all of those. Understandably, those large presentations like Dr. Lusher's, it, it's not feasible to print those. But otherwise, they should be attached to the agenda that is labeled at the front door at every meeting. When going through the agenda on topics like this evening about student conduct and communication device policies, have people come up and talk and ask their questions. Um, with that in mind, um, I would hope that after you've heard the public participation on those items, that it would give you a moment to pause and reflect and give some thought and have a discussion about those things before making your vote, so the public and the parents and the caregivers of all of the students in the district know that you know what you're talking about, and that we had an, an input in said topic. And I would hope that that would increase your transparency, while also increasing your parent and family engagement within the meeting and maybe outside. Uh, and I'd like to thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Kyra. Next, we have Susan Clark.
I am a stakeholder in this district who wears many hats, but the one that truly impacts me the most is as a certified staff member who works as a building aide at Highland Park Elementary School. Classified staff are the heart and soul of this district. We work together as a team for each and every student we come and come out with. We experience their joy and their hardships alongside them. Board members who came to see me this spring, I appreciate it, and my staff, you ladies, I look forward to seeing you in the fall. I hope my Highland Park community was able to be a small glimpse of the district as a whole. We are a community of diverse people working together in the best interest of individual students. While aides in the district are highly qualified, we are not highly trained to meet the needs of the whole learner. Trauma-informed training is essential in understanding student behavior. One of the most important lessons that is taught is not to ask what is wrong with you, but what happened to you and how can I, how can we help? This knowledge was a game changer for me at sixty-two, because I grew up in a time where there were no graders. Either you behaved or you didn't. I was raised with time. I was raised in Rose City in the nineteen-seventies in a typical house where my dad worked, and dinner was ready at five-thirty, and we gave the people every day, and we went to church every Sunday. And the world was a happy place, but it turned out me to think that trauma didn't exist for whatever reason. It wasn't discussed, or it didn't, or it was hidden from us, and certainly we would never talk about school at home. But trauma is generational, and I see it even in my own family, and families of people around me that I grew up when I say to them, "What happened to you?" Trauma isn't always big things like aggression, abuse, and it's rarely physical. There's a quote by Gabor, not kidding, that says, "Trauma is not what happens to you, trauma is what happens inside of you as a result of what happened to you." My parents never laid a hand on me, or I had anything, or I had everything, I'm physically new. However, I don't ever remember my parents telling me they loved me. And, and that caused me to make poor choices in my life and for many. But because of that, I continually tell my children, grandchildren, and friends that I love them. So being a trauma-informed means I can say to a student who tells me, "My dad went to Florida to get milk for my cereal last night, but never came home," I can help them work the debt so they can be ready to learn. Being trauma-informed gives me the sight to advocate for students whose parents can't or won't support them. That helps me support the grandmas, like me who are raising children for the second time in their lives, because that's what grandmas do. That's what grandmas do. They say it takes it, but like, and for many of our students in school I serve, they're like, "And we need to make it their safe place." I'm asking that even trauma-informed training, a requirement, not just as an option, as a, and as a class of staff and other staff members who are taking care of their own children or grandchildren, or working, so that often all employees can do the diligence for our children's needs, because that's why we are here, for the kids. I will be taking a class tomorrow, like I do every summer, because it's a great memory. And I would encourage you, if you haven't taken it, to take it tomorrow. I'm sure Jesse wouldn't mind, because flight isn't enough to go into it. Thank you.
Next, we have Autumn Skinner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bosa, members of the board, Dr. Wise, Mr. Garcia, Dr. Lusher. The meaning of hope as a verb is wanting something to happen or be the case. When Dr. Wise made the decision to step down after seventeen years, I was shocked. I thought, yeah, a little bit more ago. But as the shock wore off, hope set in that the Board of Education would find a replacement that wasn't the same old same old. A replacement that did not fit the club, made a grown jokes about the DSC. Hope that they would not have to look too far down the hall of the DSC boardroom. Hope that the board would value the students, staff, parents, and community when they spoke of what they hoped for in that superintendent. Hope that the process was truly being valued. Hope that you are not just listening to hear, but listening to respond to the call of collaboration, the call of trust, the call that we already have a leader ready to go. All you had to do was see the hope that we saw. What we saw in hope for was that Dr. Jamie Lusher would be our next superintendent of our district, our hope. She gave us all a renewed sense of hope every time she sits in our classroom, joins us alongside our jobs across all classifications, reaches out to parents with solutions, under her concerns, laughs with us, because she senses that's what we needed at the time. Hope that she would be the one that brought the two sides of our district back to being at home. There's not a single person that I know who does not value trust and respect, Dr. Jamie Lusher. She's not the same old same old, she's the leader we were all hopeful for. Did our hope fail when Mr. Randy Banks was announced as your choice for our next superintendent? I hope not, Mr. Banks said in forums, that he didn't want to apply for our superintendent opening. He had to be convinced by colleagues. Mr. Banks spoke highly of Worthington throughout his presentations, called Worthington home. The smile in his eyes as he spoke of Worthington was evident. He loved Worthington. I hope that Mr. Banks will truly listen to respond to the concerns of our students, staff, parents, and community. Hope that he can build the trust with him that we have with Dr. Lusher. Hope that we don't continue two different, as two different districts, but as one. Hope that he can get the same smile in his eyes when he talks to others about our district. Hope that he would truly feel like this is his home. For the board, I hope the decision you chose was the right one, because if it's not, then there will be no hope of trust, no hope of collaboration, and most importantly, no hope of ever unifying and moving this district forward. Thank you.
Uh, next we have Julie O'Brien.
Good evening. You can all relax. I'm not gonna wait you up tonight. I am.
When do you have it?
Well, I'm, I'm missing it. My name is Juliette O'Brien, and tonight, I'm gonna be talking about Dr. Wise, very much likely in his chagrin. When I set out to write this speech, it was a bit of a struggle, because there's very little information about Dr. Wise available beyond the district website, as he's a man who does not tune his own horn. It was at this point that I decided to reach out to those who have worked closely with Dr. Wise over the years. They have a lot of things to say. I spoke with the widower of a highly esteemed Catholic university professor who went home after participating in a committee meeting with Dr. Wise, and told her husband he was extraordinarily impressive in his commitment to offer as much as he could to our students at a time when other districts were seeking to offer less. Steady at the helm during COVID in the face of significant community pressure, Dr. Wise became quasi-expert on coronavirus nineteen, pretty much overnight, and he did what was necessary to keep our students and staff safe. Evidently, Dr. Wise is also a gifted partner. A former board member told me that she looked forward to his annual holiday party, where he invariably had a beautiful new mantle or dream kitchen that he had painstakingly constructed with intentional craftsmanship. Another fore- former board member described Dr. Wise's memory as nearly photographic. He remembered the daughter of this board member, and she was only about five when her mother was serving, and made a point to speak to her on her first day of her new teaching job in our district, fresh out of college, earlier this school year. He is a great storyteller, and one theme I heard from nearly every person I spoke with is that he typically starts speech with a story about students and the kinds of things they say to him, including asking him why he is bald. According to consensus of nearly all, he always says that the things students say to him keep him humble. But above his storytelling talent and his memory acting as someone who genuinely listens, he is gifted at seeking resolution in difficult situations with kindness and compassion. He listens without rancor or belittlement, even when the other party might deserve a little. He consistently strives for outcomes that are fair, who benefit the most number of people. And we've come a long way as a district under Dr. Wise. In twenty thirteen, the district began offering holiday kindergarten, a huge step in preparing students with the years of learning ahead. During his tenure, the district built thirteen new elementary schools, four new middle schools, and a new high school. But there's more. Graduation rates have improved under his leadership, and we now have the highest graduation rate in the district's history dating back to nineteen fifty-six. He has done tremendous things for secondary education in the district. Even before college credit plus became mandatory for districts to offer, Dr. Wise realized the importance of expanding post-secondary education and worked with the board to implement it in Southwestern. In the twenty-eleven, twelve school year, sixty-one students took college credit plus courses. This year, that number was one thousand twenty-two. These students avail themselves of three thousand seven hundred and six courses, which at three credit hours apiece, and at an estimated cost of five hundred dollars per credit hour at the university level, represents a saving of five point five, six million dollars to both families. And that doesn't even include another estimated two hundred thousand for textbooks and course materials. Dr. Wise has overseen a significant expansion of technical programs at our queer academy. We now have seventeen different programs for high school students to choose from, and we'll be adding H VAP next year, as well as expanding the pre-nursing program to accommodate double the number of students we have this year. But Dr. Wise didn't stop at the high school level. He also expanded programming at the middle school level. The district has come a long way from its offering of shop as the middle school unified arts option back in the day, and now offers students eight exciting different options. Dr. Wise combines qualities such as being a visionary leader with being a steady force, which is a rare and difficult combination of leadership style to pull off effectively. We have seen enormous growth during his tenure, but we have also enjoyed great stability. It is frankly astonishing that we have not seen a school living since two thousand and nine on the ballot, and that is not at all typical among Central Ohio districts. In the realm of financial health, I think it is important for the community to understand how positive of a position Dr. Wise is leaving us for the financial challenges ahead. Visible throughout the district, approachable to students, staff, and community members, he has led a kindergarten kazoo band, visited every building on the first day of school, read books to hundreds of kids, clombed through mud at construction sites, and served food to others and cleaned up afterwards. He has celebrated the individual achievements of colleagues and staff and worn the loss of others. He has led us well. To this extraordinary man and leader, I will just end by saying thank you.
Julie, thank you very well said.
It's Juliette.
Did I say it? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
All right. Moving on. We'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second?
Thank you.
Steele. Roll call. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskin.
Yes.
Mr. Bosa.
Uh, yes.
Thank you, everybody, for being here, and for your.